Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Delhi Township Board of Trustees meeting for July the 13th, 2016. As is our usual procedure, we'll begin with a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight's moment of silence is, "We join those who mourn in Dallas, Texas. We mourn for the loss of five police officers, and we remember how grateful we are in expressing our gratitude to those who serve and protect us in Delhi."
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's great. I'll open the meeting first with welcoming a Boy Scout joining us this evening, Tyler Johnson from Troop 350, and he is working on his merit badge for citizenship of the community. Thank you, Tyler, and his dad, Rob Johnson, is also here, so good to have you. Mr. Looby, can we begin with motions for consideration?
Motion 2016-113, approve the minutes of the Board of Trustees' meeting held on June 29th, 2016, and dispense with the reading.
I move motion 2016-113 to approve the minutes.
I second the motion.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Motion passes?
Motion 2016-114, approve bills for payment.
I move motion 2016-114 to approve bills for payment.
I second the motion.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Motion passes?
Motion 2016-115, approve the payment of overtime for pay period ending July 5th, 2016.
I move motion 2016-115 to approve the payment of overtime.
I second the motion.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Motion passes?
Motion 2016-116, approve the conditional hiring of the following three part-time positions with the Fire Department pending successful completion of a physical exam at the rate of the collective bargaining agreement with the Delhi Firefighters Association effective on or after July 14th, 2016. Zachary Roussel as part-time firefighter EMT, Shawn M. Robinson as part-time firefighter paramedic, Matthew J. Gautier, part-time firefighter paramedic.
I move motion 2016-116 to approve the conditional hiring of the three part-time positions.
I second the motion.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Motion passes?
Motion 2016-117, approve the promotion of Joshua A. Volkerding from part-time firefighter EMT to part-time firefighter paramedic effective July 14th, 2016, per the collective bargaining agreement with the Delhi Firefighters Association.
I move motion 2016-117 to approve the promotion of Joshua A. Volkerding.
I second the motion.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Motion passes. Presentations this evening will begin first with a swearing-in conducted by Police Chief Jim Howard.
Thank you, President, Board of Trustees. It's an honor and privilege to introduce you to Jimmy Gilbert. Back on June 6th, Officer Nyer from our police department resigned after 15 years, and Jimmy Gilbert here is going to replace Officer Nyer, and I can't tell you how excited we are as we are with a lot of the new people that we brought on board as far as Jimmy. He's going to be truly an asset to this department. We look and we're excited about it, and I think just as much he's excited too about it, so we look forward to a long, healthy career. Jimmy's 33-years-old, his wife Carly's here tonight, also his nine-month-old Paisley daughter, so both adorable. Jimmy's a graduate from Dayton High School, 2001. He graduated from high school. He's a resident, they're a resident of Covington, Kentucky. We won't hold that against him. Come on over, we're glad to have him. He's a graduate of the Police Academy in 2007. He also graduated in 2008 from the Federal Law Enforcement Training Academy. After those two creditations that he received, he worked for the University of Cincinnati Police Department. He also worked for Arlington Heights, both those were 2008, '09, and '10, till he obtained a position with Gulf Manor Police Department, in which he held until recently, until he resigned to come here and take the position here with Delhi Township, so we're truly happy to have him here. He enjoys spending time with his family, and he's very athletic, enjoys sports, football, baseball, what we all like to do. So with that, President, your honors to us. Swear Jimmy Gilbert in.
Would you like to introduce who else is here with you, Jimmy?
I have my mother-in-law and father-in-law, Jerry Smith and Denny Smith.
Welcome.
Jimmy, it's up here, it's for you to read.
Yes, I want to read it.
Can you read?
(laughing).
I, James A. Gilbert.
I, James A. Gilbert.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States of America.
And the laws of the State of Ohio.
And the laws of the State of Ohio.
And the resolutions of the Township of Delhi.
And the resolutions of the Township of Delhi.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform all the duties.
Discharge and perform all the duties.
Accommod upon me as a police officer.
Accommod upon me as a police officer.
Of the Delhi Township Police Department.
Of the Delhi Township Police Department.
So help me God. Congratulations and welcome.
I just wanted to congratulate him. I met you out in the parking lot. Welcome to Delhi.
Trustee Sturts.
Again, we're very blessed to have you and your lovely family. Congratulations.
Officer Gilbert, welcome to Delhi. We're very pleased. You've joined what we consider the best, so.
Thank you very, very much.
Now, we normally at this time allow the family to leave with you, but I'm going to ask for you to stay just a minute, okay? Okay. You guys finished? All right. We do have a bicentennial update this evening. First would be Pete Pritchard from the Steering Committee.
Well, we are indeed in the middle of our bicentennial, basically Delhi's big birthday. Still got a lot to go for the year here, so even though people are probably looking towards the late part of summer, we still have a lot going on all the way through the whole year, so all the way up until December. But I just want to remind everyone, tomorrow evening, we're going to have the second of three summer concerts. Of course, the Delhi Parks is sponsoring this concert, which features the band Excalibur. It's an '80s band. We're expecting a good crowd with that, and obviously we are hoping for that, hopefully good weather as well, correct? So I would actually like to thank the Parks Department and Josh Torbeck for sponsoring this and making this possible, so Josh, I do indeed thank you for that. And while we're there, for the Steering Committee, we'll be there tomorrow evening as well. We are indeed going to be selling our bicentennial T-shirts as for part of a fundraiser, and of course, taking orders for the cookbook, so we hope to be successful with that as well, so. I'd also just like to mention just off, it's Sunday, July 24th, part of the Rolling on the River Car Show being held at Fernbank Park. I know you guys have been mentioning this in some of your community events, but I'll mention that as well. I would be remiss if I didn't mention the annual tailgate party, of course, before the skirt game itself. That's Thursday, August 4th at Remke's, and of course, the Delhi skirt game itself, Friday, August 5th. We have a lot of events, like I said, even through September and October and all the way up to the gala in December, so we've got a lot going on. I'd like to, I'll talk more about those as time goes on and so on, but I really look forward to seeing everyone at the park tomorrow evening, and like I said, also for the upcoming events. As you well know, we've had a lot going on since probably early April, so we've done a lot here this year, and like I said, I look forward to continuing it right on through. But remember that you can indeed follow us on Facebook, Delhi1816, or of course, through Delhi Township's website as well to keep up with our current events, which I do indeed urge everyone to do so. With that said, I'd like to kind of turn it over to Tony Kappel, our President of the Delhi Business Association. He could just give us a brief update, of course, on the Dog Days of Delhi.
Pete, I have one question regarding the cookbook orders.
Yes.
The cost, and if payment is due at the time of ordering, and how is payment being taken?
Correct me, $13?
$12.
Right.
Pre-sale, and then $15 after.
Afterwards.
Can order it on the website, and also the Delhi Historical Website, and tomorrow night, I'm assuming they're going to be taking cash and order form.
Yes, we are indeed, so we hope they do that.
So tomorrow evening, to get a pre-order price of $12, you have to have cash?
Yes.
Okay. But you can't?
Or a credit card that they can run through.
We can.
You do have a credit card?
I don't know if we have Wi-Fi up there. I was going to ask somebody about that, but if we do, we are able to take credit card for that, so.
Okay, so everyone should come prepared for $12 for the cookbook.
Yes, $12 for the cookbook, so we're excited about that.
Great Christmas gifts.
It is, that's what I'm thinking, so cook up.
Thanks, Pete.
Thank you.
Tony Kappel, President of the Delhi Business Association, to talk about Dog Days.
Thank you, trustees. The Delhi Business Association has been planning now for just about a year, the Dog Days of Delhi. It's going to be a wonderful family event on Saturday, August 27th. Lots of great events in August with the skirt game, and then of course, Dog Days. We have many different events that you'll want to bring the family up and participate in, starting with the fishing contest at 8:00 in the morning, sponsored by Delhi Dunkin' Donuts, so you can come out and get some coffee and donuts in the morning. The dog contest that, of course, the Dog Days kind of goes right along with, we're going to have Best Trick, dog that looks most like their owner, and the Cutest Dog, and Pampered Paws is sponsoring that for us. Pioneer Days is going to be set up. The Historical Society, Matt Bailey, have a great display that's going to be set up, a lot of different people in there. That's going to be in the lodge, and Bailey sponsored that for us. We will have booths with sponsors throughout the day. Different businesses are coming up, and they will have different representations that they're going to bring, a lot of dog companies coming out with some new products and stuff like that for your pets. We will have a hot dog eating contest, so make sure you sign up for that. A cornhole tournament that Drew's on the River is sponsoring. A vintage baseball game, guys dressed up from the 1800s, going to be out on Field One. The Education Committee is going to be out there with different old-time games and contests, sack races, and three-legged races. A lot of fun, family stuff that'll be going on throughout the day at the Old Tot Lot. The Oak Hills Band and Drum Line is going to be performing at 5:00, and Mount St. Joseph University Band is going to be performing at 6:00, and Howlin' Max will be the headline band that night, starting at 7:30, going throughout the night. Northside Bank sponsored our stage and the bands. The one thing that we are really trying to get everybody to come out for, you know, one of the big things right now is the different craft beers, and Delhi Liquor Store has been fantastic in helping us out with this. They are bringing in a lot of different craft beers. We'll still have your Bud product and Miller product out there, but if you're a craft beer fan, come out, check out the different craft beers, and also the auction items. We are going to have a silent auction with some neon signs and promotional things, autograph sports memorabilia, but the best of all is, everything that we raise that night will go towards the lasting memorial for the bicentennial. We're trying to raise as much money as we can to get something nice put up at Delhi Park. The Steering Committee has done a great job with, you know, trying to put a lot of different events together, and the Business Association is happy that we're able to do this, it's our part. So come out August 27th. Register online for all of the events. All the events are free. The fishing contest, hot dog eating contest, there's no charge for any of that, and you can sign up at DelhiBusiness.org.
Thanks, Tony, and thanks, everybody at Delhi Business Association for putting on Delhi Dog Days, August 27th. Trustee Correspondence, Trustee Oswald?
First, I just want to thank Pete, you, Mary Brigham, Jack Ryan, Peg Schmidt, for all the work you've done. The events are great. I know how much time you put into it. There's a lot more events going on, so it's great. I do want to encourage everyone to come out to the concert in the park tomorrow. The reason why is because this is somewhat of a barometer for the township. We've talked about in the past three years or so about possibly bringing back the summer concert series. We don't know the numbers, we don't know the price, we don't know the cost, so tomorrow is actually somewhat of a test run. These other organizations do a great job, but ultimately, if they say, "We can't do it," they don't have to. We can't make them do it, but we would like, as a township, put on these future concerts, maybe in the future, next year, maybe one, two, and see how it is. So tomorrow is a big event for us to see if this is feasible going forward. Whether or not the park levy passes, if this breaks even, or the township gets some revenue back to put in the next summer concert series, it's a feasible option in the future. Look at what we did with the fishing. When we started three years ago, there was no fishing. We took baby steps, said, "Let's give it a try." We did. Now we're up to, what, four events a year? Seven events this year, and maybe more, depending on how they go. So tomorrow's a big day. I know it ties in the bicentennial, but for the township, for the future, because this is obviously the one year our birthday, next year, where these organizations want to continue this, it'd be great, but they don't have to, we would like to see this continue in the park and have more activities in the park, and certainly a summer concert series. So this really does give us a good barometer if this is feasible. So spread the word. If you have meetings, if you're working late, just stop up, you know, show, maybe get a cookbook, something like that, but really spread the word, because if this goes over well, we would certainly entertain this in future years to come. Thank you.
Trustee Sturts.
Yes, I'd like to congratulate, first of all, Elders volleyball team. They were first in state this year, so congratulations to them. Also on that team was Jim Looby's son Jake, who's also on a select team called Cincinnati Attack, and they went to the national volleyball competition and came in second, so congratulations to all our young men in that sport. Also, I'd like to send out the condolences from the board to the family of Rick Stolze, a longtime Delhi resident and 35-year Cincinnati fireman who passed away suddenly this weekend, so our condolences go out to his wife and family.
Thank you. If everyone got to see the news this past week, there were two moments that I was so taken by and so proud of. The first coming on Channel 19 with Officer Mike Gertie. You did a terrific job, officer. You represented us well, and the interview that they did was terrific. Michael talked about what it meant to go back out on the beat, so to speak, after the tragedy in Dallas, and you did a wonderful job, and thank you for representing us the way you did. It was really complimentary to the township and to the police department. Secondly, not second in line, but equal, right? Chief Campbell. Chief Campbell spoke on Channel 9, and Chief Campbell talked about when we have emergency response necessary, that fire and EMTs need to go in with police and the possibility of an active shooter. Am I explaining this correct? I hope so. And again, Delhi can be so proud, because Chief Campbell did a wonderful job explaining in a very calm way of our preparedness for this type of emergency. So Chief Campbell, thank you for your representation. It was beautiful. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
So now, we will continue with a report from the fiscal officer, but Jim, maybe before you go, Officer Gilbert, did you need to get your family? You can be excused. I think your little girl has just about been entertained enough. But congratulations again.
Thank you. Be safe out there.
Okay, Mr. Looby, report from the fiscal officer.
There will be no FAB meeting in the month of July, but during that time, FAB members will be meeting with department heads to go over the mid-year review. That's all I have.
Okay. No public hearings this evening, but I do have reports from departments. I'll begin with Greg DeLong, Community Development Director. Greg?
Thank you for giving me time tonight to speak real briefly. It's more of a public service announcement more than anything. We are going to talk real briefly about signs in the right-of-way, and this is primarily temporary signs. In an effort to assist our economic development goals in attracting new businesses and residents to the community, and also enhance the appearance of our street corridors within the township, starting this Friday, July 15th, the township will begin removing temporary signs that are located within our public right-of-ways along our streets and roads. According to Section 316 of our zoning resolution, signs are not permitted to be located in this area. One may ask, what is a public right-of-way? It is typically the area between a sidewalk and the street, otherwise known as a tree lawn. If there is no sidewalk to measure by, a good rule of thumb is to use the utility poles that may line the street and go one foot inside towards your property, so that would be what we would consider a right-of-way. It's more of a rule of thumb than anything, because our right-of-ways kind of meander throughout the township, especially along county roads, but utility poles are located within the public right-of-way, so that's kind of our rule of thumb. If you look up at the slide, it's kind of hard to see, but those are some examples of temporary signs, and thank goodness, those are not photos from our township, but there are some poles that get kind of close to the middle photo that you see there, but typically, a temporary sign that we're seeing in the right-of-way are garage sale signs, political signs, placards, unfortunately, missing pet signs, things like that. When people do place them out in the right-of-way, I mean, there's underground utilities to consider that if you're staking a metal rod into the ground, you may hit a fiber optic line, you just don't know what's down there, so it is a safety concern. And the other thing is, when you're nailing and stapling signs into the poles, you're damaging them, which will come back onto the property or to the residents by the utility companies when they need to replace these poles. And I can say in past experience, where I've worked before, we've actually had utility workers get injured because of nails and staples in poles. So it's something to consider when you are out there stapling this stuff up. So we are asking the residents to help us, the businesses to help us, in pushing the signs back outside of the right-of-way. We encourage anyone who wants to place signs out to contact the zoning office. We can be reached at 922-2705. We are happy to help explain to you the regulations and where would be the proper places to place these types of signs. So again, it's just a kind of a little quick public announcement on this. We are going to hit the pavement on Friday. You know, first impressions for, as an economic development side, first impressions are lasting impressions, and a lot of developers and businesses will check out your community before they contact us, and to kind of help tidy up the community a little bit is our goal here, so that's where we are with it, so.
Greg, you know, we're entering into what is commonly called the silly season.
Yes.
Where we have a lot of campaign signs. If you are picking up campaign signs that are in the right-of-way, are you taking them to a dumpster, or is there someplace a campaign can pick them up?
Yes.
Because somebody's been foolish enough to put it in the right-of-way?
We are sending out letters. They are in the mail right now. We have sent letters to the political organizations, churches, and also the realtors. They seem to be the big three that we see a lot of signs. We will confiscate the signs starting Friday. We will hold them for up to five days, and then they will be discarded.
Okay.
So we, in the letters we've sent out, we have notified, especially the political agencies and everyone, if they definitely have, you know, passed the word for us, we can't hit everyone, this would be such a mass mailing, but we will keep the signs for a period of time, and they can't come pick them up, so.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome. Any questions?
No questions.
No questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, our second department head speaking this evening will be our own Pete Landrum.
Thank you. Just wanted to remind everybody, recycling bins temporarily moved to C.O. Harrison. I think we've discussed, I think we beat it to death last time, but we, as of Sunday, we had a wooden pallet dropped off, a microwave dropped off. Please remember, those are not recyclable items. We are borrowing C.O. Harrison's parking lot at this point in time, and so please, even more so, we ask residents to respect the property. The school district has been gracious to let us continue this. Without it, the dumpsters may have been removed, so we expect, Ron, did the concrete get poured today?
Yes, likely late next week.
Probably late next week, if not early the following week before they are put back in to place at the senior center. We also are, I talked to Dan Ryan tonight, and we will be making sure when, once the dumpsters go back, that we have some new and improved signage on what's recyclable and so forth, so we hope to improve that. And just remind everybody again, please come out tomorrow night, join us at the park at 7:00. It's going to be a good time, and I think Trustee Oswald said it very well, this is a very good trial run for us. It's important. Come check out the park. If you haven't been there in a while, you're going to be floored by the new pavement. Never been so impressed by pavement, but it made the entire park just transformed, so come out and enjoy a fun night. Thank you.
Regarding the recycling bins, I need to put a thank you out to the people who stopped and helped me pick up the garbage down the hill after the windstorm. So the citizens that were pulling up actually got out of their car, and we were picking it all up when Josh and Danny arrived to really professionally, I should say, pick up the windstorm droppings, but I've been by many times, and I think the residents have done, except for the pallet and the microwave, a good job of keeping it clean, and thank you, Josh, and Danny, and Ron, for staying on top of that while we're on borrowed land. Okay. All right, reading of the resolutions, please, Mr. Looby.
Resolution 2016-124, resolution approving purchase order obligations incurred on behalf of the Township by the Township Administrator, authorizing payment of certain purchase order obligations, and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution?
I move dispense with the second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Looby, please call the roll.
Mrs. Seavey?
Yes.
Mr. Oswald?
Yes.
Mrs. Sturts?
Yes.
Resolution passes?
Resolution 2016-125, resolution authorizing application for a grant from the Ohio Bureau of Workers' Compensation for the Workplace Wellness Grant Program to assist in the cost of implementing a wellness program, authorizing the Township Administrator to execute and submit all required participation documents, and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution? We have Lisa, our human resources.
Yes, this is a workplace wellness grant that the Bureau of Workers' Comp offers to employers that don't currently have a wellness program in place, which would be applicable to us. It basically allows for $15,000 in grant money that we could earn over a four-year period. They base it on participation each year. The first year, you can earn up to $5,000. The second year is $3,750. Same with the third, and then the fourth is $2,500. The grant dollars are meant for biometric screenings and health risk assessments, so they'll reimburse us for those items that we do at first, and then we'll get aggregate data based on our employees' data to see where are our health issues within the township, and then the rest of the grant dollars are meant to be put towards programs to assess those, you know, and help our employees with those particular health problems, that kind of thing, so.
I move dispense with the second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Looby, please call the roll.
Mrs. Seavey?
Yes.
Mr. Oswald?
Yes.
Mrs. Sturts?
Yes.
Resolution passes?
Resolution 2016-126, resolution certifying violation abatement expenses at 4439 Mayhew Avenue to the County Auditor for Assessment and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution?
I move dispense with the second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Looby, please call the roll.
Mrs. Seavey?
Yes.
Mr. Oswald?
Yes.
Mrs. Sturts?
Yes.
Resolution passes?
Resolution 2016-127, resolution certifying violation abatement expenses at 4431 Delhi Pike to the County Auditor for Assessment and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution?
I move dispense with the second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Looby, please call the roll.
Mrs. Seavey?
Yes.
Mr. Oswald?
Yes.
Mrs. Sturts?
Yes.
Resolution passes?
Resolution 2016-128, resolution certifying violation abatement expenses at 342 Anderson Ferry Road to the County Auditor for Assessment and dispensing with the second reading. Ferry Road to the county auditor for assessment and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution?
I move dispense with the second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Looby, please call the roll.
Mrs. Seavey?
Yes.
Mr. Oswald?
Yes.
Mrs. Sturts?
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Resolution 2016-129, resolution certifying violation abatement expenses at 469 Rosemont Avenue to the county auditor for assessment and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution?
I move dispense with the second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Looby, please call the roll.
Mrs. Seavey?
Yes.
Mr. Oswald?
Yes.
Mrs. Sturts?
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Resolution 2016-130, resolution certifying violation abatement expenses at 4426 Delhi Pike to the county auditor for assessment and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution?
I move dispense with the second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Looby, please call the roll.
Mrs. Seavey?
Yes.
Mr. Oswald?
Yes.
Mrs. Sturts?
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Resolution 2016-131, resolution certifying violation abatement expenses at 4356 Delhi Pike to the county auditor for assessment and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution?
I move dispense with the second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Looby, please call the roll.
Mrs. Seavey?
Yes.
Mr. Oswald?
Yes.
Mrs. Sturts?
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Resolution 2016-132, resolution certifying violation abatement expenses at 4011 Delhi Pike to the county auditor for assessment and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution?
I move dispense with the second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Looby, please call the roll.
Mrs. Seavey?
Yes.
Mr. Oswald?
Yes.
Mrs. Sturts?
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Resolution 2016-133, resolution certifying violation abatement expenses at 3935 Delhi Pike to the county auditor for assessment and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution?
I move dispense with the second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Looby, please call the roll.
Mrs. Seavey?
Yes.
Mr. Oswald?
Yes.
Mrs. Sturts?
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Resolution 2016-134, resolution certifying violation abatement expenses at 388 Don Lane to the county auditor for assessment and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution?
I move dispense with the second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Looby, please call the roll.
Mrs. Seavey?
Yes.
Mr. Oswald?
Yes.
Mrs. Sturts?
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Resolution 2016-135, resolution declaring nuisance for excessive vegetation at 289 Francis Ridge Drive and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution? Mr. Roach.
Thank you, trustee Seavey. We received a complaint at this occupied property for excessive vegetation. We should order letters with no compliance. We inspected the property this morning, it's still in the same condition, so requesting that your board declare this property a nuisance so we can address this violation with our nuisance procedures.
I move dispense with the second reading.
I second the motion to dispense with the second reading.
All those in favor of the motion to dispense with the second reading?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Looby, please call the roll.
Mrs. Seavey?
Yes.
Mr. Oswald?
Yes.
Mrs. Sturts?
Yes.
Resolution passes.
Resolution 2016-136, resolution declaring nuisance for excessive vegetation at 333 Don Lane and dispensing with the second reading.
I introduce and move the adoption of this resolution.
I second the adoption of this resolution.
Any discussion on this resolution? Again, Mr. Roach.
Thank you, trustee Seavey. We received a complaint at this vacant property for excessive vegetation. We should order letters with no compliance. We inspected the property today and it's still in the same state, so we're requesting